Good morning. It's 9:00 AM and I'd like to call to order the July 5th, 2022 City Council Meeting. Please call and roll.
Garza?
Here.
Bass?
Here.
Bagwell?
Richardson?
Here.
Pyros State Carvallo?
Here.
The Church of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning's prayer will be given by Darrell Peterson. Thank you so much.
Well, let's pray. Dear heavenly and most gracious Father, we just give you the praise and glory and honor. We thank you, Lord God, for the wisdom, guidance, and understanding that you deliver. And Father, we just thank you as this big celebration that we've just come through. It's a celebration of our independence, that we should never forget how we received all of the blessings that was bestowed upon us because of people that gave their lives, the people that organized and put together the Declaration of Independence. And Father, I just thank you for the price, the price they paid for our freedom, that we never forget our freedom, Lord. And I just thank you, Father, for this city. We thank you, Father, for Hutchinson. We thank you for the administration that runs it. We thank you, Lord God, that we learn to walk and talk and flow with you, that, Father, this city becomes the greatest city. And I know it's got a ways to go, but we all do. But it becomes the greatest city that it is recognized for the quality and the purpose that they carry out. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Next item, please.
Item 4A, a proclamation for National Parks and Recreation Month.
Okay, could I please have Amy Conkling with Hutch Rec. and Justin Combs with the city to join me at the podium? Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Hutchinson and Reno County, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health and well-being, as well as alleviating illnesses, and whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education, and park and recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development, and whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of a local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the city of Hutchinson recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources, now therefore I, Jade Pyros State Carvallo, Mayor of the city of Hutchinson, Kansas, to hereby proclaim the month of July 2022 as National Parks and Recreation Month. Would you like to say a few words?
Good morning. Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. Just want to say a big thank you on the City Council, as well as the Hutch Rec. Commission Board. You know, these last several years have been challenges for lots of folks, for lots of different reasons. I really got the sense this past budget season, you know, the Parks and Rec. is viewed as a core service. It's not just the icing on the cake, that we were had an equal seat at the table as everyone else. I just want to say thank you for that. The other thing I want to really give a shout out today is, it truly is a team effort to bring Parks and Recreation to our community, you know, whether it's a 20-year veteran of my department, or a high school student who's out there just, you know, dragging ball fields, or a lifeguard at the pool. There's a lot of folks behind the scenes that bring these services to our community every day. So I just want to say a big thank you to those folks. They don't get the recognition they deserve. A lot of the work they do is not fun, you know, it's cleaning public restrooms, it's, you know, pulling weeds, it's running a weed eater all day, you know, calling balls and strikes at a youth athletic game, a youth baseball game. So again, without those folks, none of this would be possible, so I just want to say a big thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Good morning. I'm Amy Conkling, Assistant Executive Director at Hutch Rec. And just to piggyback off of what Justin said, we would like to thank you at Hutch Rec. for your support as a City Council, as well as our Board of Commissioners at Hutch Rec. Quality of life is really important, not only to our own residents, but to visitors who come in. Hutch Rec. the last 75 years has been the local recreation provider, and we're looking forward to 75-plus more years of providing those core services as Justin talked about. We just are so thankful for the emphasis that you guys place on quality of life and through our Parks and Recreation System, and we encourage you to follow us all month long as we celebrate Parks and Rec. Month, as well as our 75 years at Hutch Rec. You can go to our website and follow us on social media. So, thank you. Thank you both for all that you do to increase the quality of life in Hutchinson, and you're so right. Parks have been a respite, especially when we can go anywhere indoors. So, I know staffing has been a struggle, so hope that that is shoring up, and you have the resources you need to continue bringing excellent services to Hutch. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 5, oral communications from the audience.
Okay, this is the portion of the meeting where those in the audience are able to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. We do ask that you approach the podium, state your name and zip code, and limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Morning, Mayor, Council. Jeff Hooper, Chief of Police. I just want to announce that next Thursday, a week from this coming Thursday, on the 14th of July, we'll be hosting our Youth Academy at the Hutchinson Police Department. This year, we targeted kids that were in the 6th grade that will be going to the 7th grade next year, and it's a whole day full of fun events at the police department. We feed them lunch, we allow them to work a crime scene, get on the radio and dispatch officers attend, right, and a lot of other law enforcement activities they're going to get to participate in. There's still room in that. If any parents want to get their kids still in class, you can contact me or Captain Mike Collins at the police department. We'd be happy to get your kids signed up for that full day. And then that evening, starting at 5:30, is the Third Annual Building Bridges Barbecue that we do in conjunction with the city of Hutch and the NAACP Youth, and that's at Rice Park, and that starts at 5:30. And it's really a great event where we allow law enforcement officers and kids to team up and play games and bond and really kind of bring those two groups together. So, that is open to the public. There'll be food out there. We'll be cooking and barbecuing, so the public's certainly welcome to attend that event as well.
Thank you, Chief. How many participants in the Youth Academy?
That's a good question. I know we have somewhere between 10 and 20.
Oh, okay.
But we can easily probably accommodate 20 or 25, so we could probably still sign up another five or seven kids, I think, if people are interested.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there others in the audience who would like to address the council on items that aren't on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Please call the next item.
Item 6, consent agenda.
Their discussion or motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pyros State Carvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7A, consider ordinance authorizing Woody Street Freeway Roundabout Design and Study.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. As a reminder, the IRS regulations state that in order to reimburse ourselves with bond proceeds, we must adopt an ordinance before we have any expenditures on the project. On June 7th, the council approved a contract with WSP USA for the Woody Street Roundabout Design and the Avenue B Study for Access for $448,230. The ordinance attached that you are have been provided states a cost of $475,000. That allows for bonding costs. If bonding costs are not that much, we will reduce the bonding size to the actual amount of bonding costs. The timing of the bonding is not known yet. It will either be late '22 or early 2023. I'll know more about the timing of that as I meet with staff during our quarterly meetings regarding other bonded projects. We hope to bond this with other projects. So, the recommendation is to approve the ordinance as provided. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments from the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city of Hutchinson, Kansas, to pay the cost of certain improvements all pursuant to Charter Ordinance 50 of the city and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Okay, motion and second. Any comment? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pyros State Carvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7B, consider 2024 budget resolution of intent.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. The next process in the budget is to approve the resolution of intent to levy a property tax exceeding the revenue-neutral rate. This will give staff permission to provide this resolution to county staff in order to send out the notices to taxpayers that we will be exceeding our revenue-neutral rate. You have been provided with the 2022 budget mill levy, which was 44.492. Our revenue-neutral rate mill levy is 41.556. We intend to meet that revenue-neutral rate. So, as a reminder, this is just being done as precaution in case the valuation changes in any way. It'll guarantee the revenue that we will levy and allow for any changes in the valuation. If it increases, then we won't have any problems with exceeding our revenue-neutral rate. Per SB 13, the budget hearing must be between August 20th and September 20th. I am proposing that we set our revenue-neutral rate hearing and our budget hearing for September 6th. It is a normal council meeting that falls between those dates. This resolution would set that date as soon as possible. I will provide a budget that I will post on our website, and council can review that. There have been a couple changes since we last discussed the budget. We have made changes to the dispatch budget. We're postponing a project until 2024, and so that will provide a savings of $82,000. We're also proposing another half percent increase to staff merit-based raises, which would cost $53,000. So, our ending general fund balance with those changes would be $5,384,000. Are there any questions regarding that or the process?
Angela, do you mind reviewing the differences in mill levies, just for the public's knowledge?
Yes. I don't have that calculated right now. I believe it's a decrease of 2.96 mills.
Yeah, I thought it was about three. Okay.
Yes, just under three mills.
And that ending balance is a very conservative estimate. You anticipate it could be closer to six?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions from council? Or the audience? Is there a motion on this item? Everyone's sleepy after the holiday.
I would move to approve a resolution of the city of Hutchinson, Kansas, regarding the governing bodies intent to levy a property tax exceeding the revenue-neutral rate and authorize the mayor to sign. I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pyros State Carvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 8A, consider contract for sale and purchase of rural estate with Salt City Investments LLC.
Paula Brown, City Attorney. Counsel, you've had this item in your agenda packet before, so you've actually seen the contract. Brad Pryor is here with Salt City Investments. It's to sell Lot 5 of the business park to that group for $100,000. It's approximately $5,000 an acre, and it's 20 usable acres, which is how the figure is arrived at. They intend to build a shell, subject to finish by whatever business that they attract. We have a prior obligation with Siemens that I've noted in the memo. That is still being looked at because, well, Siemens isn't open right now, and these monies are related to building a new staging track. And also, what complicates it is Siemens isn't the controlling interest right now in it. It's Gomesa, and so I know what's going on. They're going up through the chain of command in two different multinational corporations to give me a response to what we've already done. But the most we'd be obligated is what appears in the memo, $200,000 for the city and $100,000 for the chamber. That remains to be seen whether or not that happens. But in the meantime, Salt City Investments would certainly like to get started, and the contract calls for them taking possession upon the contract being executed. The purchase option that Siemens has, it would be required that they establish a business on that track if they're going to use the option, and it would have to include employment. Well, we know that's not going to happen. I'll leave it at that. We know that's not going to happen. And we have the ability to terminate the option. It's just a question of what monies, if any, we pay. So, questions from the council?
Well, Paul, I know we've had several discussions about this. I, this agenda item would not be authorizing us to pay that $200,000 and encumbering the chamber to pay the $100,000. Or are you just saying...
We've actually already done that in our contracts, so this contract doesn't have anything to do with that. We have a prior commitment, and that contract controls.
Yeah. I know we have a disagreement on this item, so, but you are the attorney. I guess...
And it does remain to be seen what happens there, because I have not heard back from them, and
When can we...
There doesn't appear to be a need for a third staging track, or that it will happen at all.
Yeah. When can we terminate the option?
I want to hear back from them first, what they have in mind. We can terminate it. It's going to happen.
Yeah. I guess I felt that option was terminated many years ago, but...
No.
We were just going to agree to disagree.
No, it's, that's not the way the contract reads. Basically, it covers multiple scenarios, and essentially, it was about building a staging track in the event that we need them off the lead track. Well, circumstances have changed, particularly out there. They're not operating at all, and with the Salt City Investments coming in, they don't have immediate need for the use of the rail line. So, some of those things are not known at this time.
Well, and even if our community paid the $300,000 between us and the chamber, they'd still need $500,000 from KDOT to build, and they're not going to get that.
Well, and beyond that, to just use good faith efforts. Well, okay, a good faith effort with KDOT right now on a plant that's not open, they're not going to invest in that.
I guess I don't want us to just throw $300,000, because, let's face it, the chamber's not going to pay that hundred. On a track that's not going to be built for a facility that's not open.
I'm sorry?
On a track that is not going to be built.
Right. We're not going to write a check today, ma'am.
Okay. Brad, we're not going to hold up, we're not going to hold up the sale, but I just wanted to clarify a few things.
Is the obligation contingent upon a business actually using that rail south of Siemens? I mean, if there's no business using the rail, then there's no obligation.
That's a good point, yeah.
So, if a business, if an opportunity came up and a business wanted to move in there and wanted to use the rail, then we'd have to really hash this out. Is that correct?
I hope to hash that out before then.
Yeah. It was a preemptive attempt to ensure access to track.
Counsel, my goal is to resolve this.
Okay.
Regardless, regardless of the circumstances, whatever their response is, my goal is to resolve it permanently, be done with it, while there's still someone here who knows what that agreement is about. And I will.
We believe in you, Paul.
Okay.
Are there comments, questions on this item? We do have the applicant, if you'd like to hear from him. Motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the contract for sale and purchase of real estate with Salt City Investments, LLC, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Okay. Any last opportunities for comments? Anyone in the audience like to comment on this item? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Iris Staker-Hallor?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 8B, Consider Special Alcohol Fund Award for New Beginnings.
Counsel, I had spoken to you about possibility of additional funds in the special alcohol fund and about contacting new beginnings, about needs that they might have, since we actually have a detox center in Hutchinson now, which has been operating now for a year. So we had a desire many, for many years, to have a detox center in Hutchinson. Now we actually have one, so there's something to contribute to, and it's not just a dream. Contacted them, hopefully for, you know, actually, my preference was, and according to the statute, for infrastructure for the facility. They just didn't have great needs for that. There were some other things that they suggested that don't comply with the state statute, how these funds are to be used. Some of them were for recreational-type purposes associated with the center. But they were able to come up with three here, a pill-counting machine, and you may have seen, they have some of these for home that you may have seen on cable. It's a, it's a, it's just a dispensing machine, but it will dispense it according to daily and what it's programmed to put prescribed for that person. Well, this is on the commercial end for the detox center, because you have multiple patients and multiple prescription medicine to be dispensed. And that's what this, that's what this pill-counting machine is for. Transport van, they, a lot of these folks will not have driver's licenses, and they need to be transported for medical appointments and other matters. And so a transport van would be very beneficial for them. And then there's a replacement of three windows at the treatment center, which of course is infrastructure and will help with the center. The $36,000 does not impact any of our current contributions, our annual contributions. There's sufficient funds for these, and there's really no reason not to help the detox center. And I got these from Shar Gonzalez. Questions from the council?
Could you breeze, go over how this fund started? It's alcohol tax that we have, right?
It's a tax on liquor by the drink.
And we decided to give some, that fund was designated for them, correct?
It.
If I remember right.
It has a state statute about how it's dispensed. If you look at the beginning of the cover memo, it talks about that. And it talks about maintenance, expansion of services or programs whose principal purpose is alcoholism and drug abuse prevention and education, detoxification intervention, et cetera. So that's, that's what it's for. The tax, we receive a third of it. A third of it goes to the city's general fund, and a third of it goes to parks and recreation. I was looking for Justin, but he's not there. And that's how it's distributed. And we have several groups that we contribute to annually, and I might say this, also on the detox center, the reason we don't contribute to them annually, this fund is not that big. And their operating costs, we couldn't scratch the surface with this fund on their operating costs. Their operating costs are a million plus annually. So that's why I try to look at infrastructure, if possible, but these are other items of significant cost, and it will be helpful to them.
I really appreciate you looking into this, Paul, and seeing how we can contribute in some small way, because it was a huge community effort to get that up and running and want to see it be as successful as possible. Are there further questions for city attorney or a motion on this item?
Motion to approve the proposed memorandum of understanding with new beginnings for the purchase of a pill-counting machine, transport van, and replacement on three windows at the treatment center and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second. Any comments, public comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Iris Staker-Hallor?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 9, Report to City Officials.
Okay, we'll start with you, John.
Had a great Fourth of July holiday. A lot of, other than, it is pretty darn hot, but that's okay. The Patriots Parade was fantastic. Everyone that I was around was very respectful and neighborly, and it was good to see that kind of a community event, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, what about you, Sarah?
I don't have anything to report at the moment.
Okay. You're great.
I don't have a lot, just appreciate city staff trying to do work with their understaffed situation. I really appreciate when we hear from the community for a need that city staff does their best to get it done, even without having enough help. So I appreciate that. Appreciate you, Gary.
Thank you.
Well said. Okay, what do you have, Steve?
Yes, I talked to the chief earlier today, and he said he really had no problems on the Fourth of July with firecrackers, no house fires and so forth. That means that everybody's going by the law, hopefully. And other than that, it was a great Fourth of July, a little hot, but that's all I have.
Yeah, thank you. I want to reiterate thanks to those who put on the parade and the fireworks display. Just such a fun holiday, very, very unifying, as you mentioned. I had a question about where we are in the ARPA process. I know that we had an RFP out for entities that would be willing to help us with that. And then I thought also maybe you could give the community an update on where we're at in the executive search process.
I have both those on my, on my agenda to talk about, but I can certainly talk about them now. With regard to the ARPA management consulting, as we reported, the proposals came in on June 28th. I've asked four individuals and myself to review those. Angela, Rebecca, Dave Sotello, and Carmel White are reviewing those. We're going to, we're planning on meeting this, this week. There are, again, four proposals. We plan to try to have something to you on the 19th to consider, a recommendation to consider. So we'll, unless something happens, we should be able to meet that deadline. The other thing that I think the mayor mentioned is the city manager's search. We've, because of summer, summer vacations and activities, we need, we need to come up with a date. We were looking at August the 2nd, which is your, a council meeting date. June was, unfortunately, the consultant was gone, this, is gone this week out of the office and on the night, the week of the 19th. So we weren't able to schedule that. We did try a couple of other dates, but we just weren't able to find a time when everyone would be available. So in talking with the mayor, I believe she has, she'll be here on the, on the 2nd, August 2nd, but it, but she needs to get to a meeting, so we're going to try to make that kind of a short meeting. So would, if we were to meet on the, on May or August 1st in the evening, would that work for all of you? That'll be a Monday, Monday night. We can meet whatever your normal time is, 6 o'clock or some other time. And what, what we'd be looking at is the consulting coming in on, at probably noon, 1 o'clock. Part of, part of this process is to determine what your, what you would like to do with regard to allowing for public input. One thing that we proposed is maybe having three focus groups, small focus groups. One, perhaps, business leaders in the community. Another one, maybe nonprofits such as, you know, Chamber Foundation, those kind of organizations. And then one that was representative of the diversity in our, in our community. And I talked to Dave Sotello about that. He thought that would be a good way to do that, but that would be one. And so the consultant would meet with each of one of those groups and give community input that way. If you wanted to extend that, we could probably do a survey. I think that's what was done last time, is a survey online. People could go online and it would be one that they would select various things. It wouldn't be an open-ended question. Those are pretty hard to assemble the input, but they would have opportunities, provide public input that way if you want to go that route.
I love those ideas. I think the idea of getting three stakeholder groups together would, would be helpful, and then extending it through the survey. Would the goal be to have those stakeholder meetings on August 1st before he met with us or after?
What we'd probably do is see, he would probably do those in the afternoon of May, of August 1st. So you would be the last group he would meet with, probably in the evening. At least we had planned on having him, if you want to go that direction, to come in so he could do those, have those meetings with the groups on that Monday afternoon, then have a meeting with you the next day. But since we're going to change that a little bit, he should be able to do that in the evening and have that input.
Yeah. What does council think about?
I think that's a great idea, yes.
And how, and are you looking for council or staff or some combination to identify who should be in those stakeholder meetings?
It would be helpful if you have ideas who you'd like to see represented at those meetings, so we could certainly take that information. If you, if we, we're looking at probably groups of no more than six. And if we do have some gaps, certainly staff can help with identifying some people in the community.
We can just email you with the suggestions?
You could do that, if you'd like.
We should handle this.
The sooner the better, just so we could make sure that we are able to let people know enough time to get that on their schedule.
How does everyone feel about August 1st for an evening meeting?
I can do evening, yeah.
Anything after 5? What about you, Sarah?
Yeah, if it's more like 6, 6:30.
Okay. Plan on 6, does that work for you?
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine.
Okay. I will let the consultant know we should be able to work that out, and then just email me if you have organizations that you would like represented on, or individuals that you would like to have represented on those, those three different groups. There are about, there, once the consultant gets here, I'll let him talk to you about future dates. He has developed a time schedule, and of course, the kickoff is what kind of triggers that and gets things going. But when we, when he projects it will have the finalists selected, then that'll be another date, but again, you can set that according to your schedules. And then the interviews will come later on, so while we got everybody together, we'll try to go through that.
Great. Well, we'll just continue dragging it on as long as we can, so we can keep it, Gary. No, I'm sorry. We're committed to finding a replacement. Well, that's all I had. Are there other items you?
I just want to say, thank, thank you for your comments to staff. We do have a great staff, and they work, they work pretty hard to get ready for the holiday and during the holiday, so certainly appreciate your comments. A lot of times I get credit, but they're the ones that are really doing the work, so I really appreciate your comments.
Great. I noticed we have a few executive sessions on the agenda and was wondering how long you think we should set for the first one? Or I guess there's only one? There's two.
I think that probably 30 minutes. Tom's not here, but I think 30 minutes would be enough.
Okay, so maybe 10:05 for that first one?
Yes.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
I would move to recess and do executive session pursuant to the employer-employee red negotiations exception, KSA 75-4319B3, in order to discuss issues related to 2023 contract negotiations with the city's bargaining units. The open meeting to resume in the city council chambers at 10:05 a.m.
I'll second that.
Okay, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Iris Staker-Hallor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Council, we've resumed the open meeting. Returning from executive session, there is another motion for executive session. And Vice Mayor Richardson, if you would take care of that.
Yes, I would accept a motion for recessing into executive session.
So moved.
And we'll make that for 10:35. All right. Do I have a second?
A second.
And I'll call Rose. Garza?
Yes.
Fass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
I understand. Thank you, we resume the executive session. I'll hold it.